Your house one more time to sit and to learn, oh God, in the name of Jesus. Father, we just give you all praise and honor and glory, and we pray that everything that has been said, being said or done brings you glory and is pleasing to you, oh God. Father, in the name of Jesus, as I decrease, you increase, oh Father God. You and you alone be seen, oh God, in the mighty name of Jesus. And Father, we just thank you again. We just thank you, God. Father, you are just so good, and we just thank you, oh God, for allowing us to be here one more time, Father. And we give you all praise, honor, and glory. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. Hallelujah. Well, I thought about it as I was praying and preparing and studying. One thing that you all will notice about me is I get very excited about the Word of God. And sometimes I have to say, whoa, 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 slow down. But it's because the Word is alive. And like the word says, oh, taste and see that the Lord is good. And that means his Word is good. Amen? So if I get excited, don't pay me no attention, join in with me, get excited with me, hallelujah, in the name of Jesus. So just a real quick recap from last week. We talked about healing is God's provision, that God has a redemptive plan. We found out that Jehovah Rapha is one of the seven redemptive names of Jesus Christ, and it means, I am the Lord that heals thee. Hallelujah. We also learned that it is God's nature to heal. Hallelujah. And we learned that God did not put sickness or disease upon the people or the believers of God. It's Satan. It's Satan. Because God is a covenant-keeping God that doesn't change. He's the same yesterday, today, and forevermore. Amen? So we're gonna move on tonight. We're in section three of your syllabus. I say that, but you will receive your syllabus, but we're in section three of your syllabus. And it's Christ the healer. He healed them all. He healed them all is a powerful and often quoted phrase that captures the compassionate and miraculous healing ministry of Jesus Christ as described in the New Testament. Jesus healed every manner of sickness and disease. You know, I've read that many times. And you know, sometimes we read the Word of God so fast, we don't take a time to just stop, look at a particular word or a phrase. We just read it and keep on going, and then it becomes kind of like second nature to we hear it, you know, but we don't stop to really take a look. And I was so thankful because as I was studying the Word of God, I was like, hmm, he healed every manner of sickness and disease. I said, what is, what is every manner? And it says, Jesus healed all kinds of sickness and diseases, no matter what the condition. The phrase every manner is older English for every kind and all types. So that means there's nothing that is beyond God's reach or God's healing touch. He healed them all. Hallelujah. So we're going to look at several scriptures that highlight how Jesus healed all who came to him with every manner of sickness and disease. But before we go into that, we're gonna go to Isaiah sixty-one and one. If you'll turn with me to Isaiah sixty-one and one. And I'm gonna be reading that from the King James Version first. And this was the scripture that says, "The Spirit of the Lord God is upon me, because the Lord hath anointed me to preach good tidings unto the meek; he has sent me to bind up the brokenhearted, to proclaim liberty to the captives, and the opening of the prison to them that are bound." Amen. Now, this is scripture here is spoken by the prophet Isaiah. So of course, Jesus Christ had not come on the scene yet, but he was prophesying, and he was telling what was to come and what was, what the Lord was being, Jesus Christ was gonna be sent for. Now listen to it in the Amplified Version. It says, "The Spirit of the Lord God is upon me, because the Lord has anointed and qualified me to preach the gospel of good tidings to the meek, the poor, and afflicted. He has sent me to bind up and heal the brokenhearted, to proclaim liberty to the physical and spiritual captives, and the opening of the prison, and of the eyes to those who are bound." Amen. So here, the prophet Isaiah is telling what, when Jesus Christ comes, what he's, he's coming. He's coming because the Spirit of the Lord has anointed him to heal and to set free the captives. Amen, aren't you glad about that? Now let's go over into the New Testament. Let's go to Acts ten thirty-eight. Again, Acts ten thirty-eight. And I'll be reading that from the King James Version first. And it says, "How God anointed Jesus of Nazareth with the Holy Ghost and with power." Didn't Isaiah say that over in the New Testament? Hallelujah. "Who went about doing good and healing all that were oppressed of the devil, for God was with him." Amen? Now, let's turn over to Matthew twelve fifteen. Matthew twelve fifteen. Again, we're speaking about Christ the healer. Matthew twelve fifteen in the King James says, "But when Jesus knew it, he withdrew himself from thence, and great multitudes followed him, and he healed them all." Well, the backstory of this scripture is, this was when God healed the man with the withered hand. He went into the synagogue, and he was teaching, and he healed the man with the withered hand. It was on Sabbath day. Now take a listen to it from the Message Bible. It says, "When Jesus left the field, he entered their meeting place." That was the synagogue. "There was a man there with a crippled hand. They said to Jesus, 'Is it legal to heal on the Sabbath?'" They were baiting him. "He replied, 'Is there a person here who, finding one of your lambs fallen into a ravine, wouldn't, even though it was a Sabbath, pull it out? Surely kindness to people is as legal as kindness to animals.'" Then he said to the man, "Hold out your hand." He held it out, and it was healed. The Pharisees walked out furious, sputtering about how they were going to ruin Jesus. We know that wasn't gonna happen, right? Jesus, knowing they were out to get him, moved on. A lot of people followed him, and he healed them all. He healed them all. Hallelujah. Now let's go to Matthew eight sixteen and seventeen. Matthew eight sixteen and seventeen. Say amen when you have it. "When the evening was come, they brought unto him many that were possessed with devils; and he cast out the spirits with his word, and healed all that were sick, that it might be fulfilled which was spoken by Azias or Isaiah the prophet, saying himself took our infirmities and bare our sicknesses." Hallelujah. Amen. Okay, let's go over to Mark one thirty-four. Mark one thirty-four. And I'm gonna be reading from the Message Bible. It said, "That evening, after the sun was down, they brought sick and evil afflicted people to him; the whole city lined up at his door. He cured their sick bodies and tormented spirits. Because the demons knew his true identity, he didn't let them say a word." But notice here, he not only healed their body, but he healed their spirits. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. So God heals our spirits, he hears our bodies. Whatever it is that we stand in need of is concerning healing, God is able to heal all. Every manner of disease, every manner of sickness, God is able to do it. Amen? But I like where it says, "Because the demons knew his true identity, he didn't let them say a word." They couldn't open them, them demons couldn't even speak. You know, so you think about that, them, they couldn't even speak. They couldn't say a word because they knew who Jesus was. These verses emphasize that Jesus didn't turn away anyone. He healed everyone that came to him. There's three points that I like to bring out about those scriptures. Number one, God's will to heal. The phrase, "He healed them all," is often used to affirm the belief that healing is in God's will. "If Jesus, the express image of God," found in Hebrews one and three. Now I'm gonna read that before I finish this verse here. Hebrews one and three in the Amplified Version says, "He is the sole expression of the glory of God, the light being, the outranging radiance of the divine; and he is the perfect imprint and very image of God's nature, upholding and maintaining and guiding and propelling the universe by his mighty Word of power. When he had by offering himself accomplished our cleansing of sins and riddance of guilt, he sat down at the right hand of the divine majesty on high." So I'm gonna go back, it says, "If Jesus, the express image of God," speaking in Hebrews one and three, healed all who came to him. Many believe this reflects God's heart towards human suffering and healing and sickness and disease. Amen? Number two, faith and compassion. Jesus frequently responded to faith and was moved by compassion. Healing was not just a display of power, it was a demonstration of divine love. And number three, Christ the healer today. In Hebrews thirteen and eight, I won't go there, but what it's saying, Jesus Christ, the same yesterday and today and forever, and that healing is available to all who believe. It's available through prayer, faith, and the work of the Holy Spirit. Amen? It's available through prayer, faith, and the work of the Holy Spirit. Amen? Part B says, "Christ's redemptive work was threefold." Let's turn to Galatians three thirteen fourteen, and then we're gonna jump down to verse twenty-nine. Galatians three thirteen and fourteen, we'll start there first. I'm gonna be reading from the King James Version. And it says, "Christ has redeemed us from the curse of the law, being made a curse for us; for it is written, 'Cursed is everyone that hangeth on a tree.'" Verse fourteen, "That the blessing of Abraham might come on the Gentiles through Jesus Christ, that we might receive." That word receive there means to accept and take hold of it. "The promise of the, of the Spirit through faith." And then verse twenty-nine, "And if ye be Christ, then ye are Abraham's seed and heirs according to the promise." Amen, amen. So the three-fold redemptive work of Christ. From these verses, we can see that Christ's redemptive work accomplishes three main things. Number one, redemption from the curse of the law. Christ has redeemed us from the curse of the law. That was verse thirteen. "Christ took upon himself the curse, the punishment that we deserved because of sin and failure to keep the law. This is a substitutionary atonement. He died in our place." Amen? The curse includes death, separation from God, and all the consequences of sin. Number two, the blessing of Abraham given to the Gentiles. Verse fourteen says, "That the blessing of Abraham might come on the Gentiles through Jesus Christ." Through Christ, Gentiles, non-Jews, are now included in the covenant blessings promised to Abraham. That means me, that means you. Hallelujah. The blessings of Abraham refers to justification by faith. See Galatians three nine and six. I'm gonna read that in the Amplified. It says, "Thus Abraham believed in, and adhered to, and trusted in, and relied on God; and it was reckoned and placed to his account, and credited as righteousness, as conformity to the divine will and purpose, thought, and action." Verse seven, "Know and understand that it is really the people who live by faith who are the true sons of Abraham." Verse eight, "And the scripture foreseen that God would justify, declare righteous, put in right standing with himself, the Gentiles, in consequence of faith, proclaimed the gospel, foretelling the glad tidings of a Savior long beforehand, to Abraham in the promise, saying, 'And you shall all the nations of the earth be blessed.'" And verse nine says, "So then, those who are people of faith are blessed and made happy and favored by God as partners in fellowship with the believing and trusting Abraham." Amen? So the blessings of Abraham given to the Gentiles through Christ. Gentiles, non-Jews, are now included in the covenant blessings promised to Abraham. The blessing of Abraham refers to justification by faith and all the spiritual benefits that come with being in covenant with God. Amen, hallelujah. Now, number three, the promise of the Spirit through faith. Verse fourteen says, "That we might receive the promise of the Spirit through faith." Christ's redemptive work also gives believers the Holy Spirit. This includes regeneration, sanctification, and empowerment for godly living. The Spirit is both the seal and guarantee of our inheritance in Christ. Can you say amen about it? Now verse twenty-nine ties it all together. It says, "If ye be Christ, then ye are Abraham's seed and heirs according to the promise." So if you belong to Christ, you are redeemed, blessed with Abraham's blessings, filled with the Spirit, and an heir of God's promises. Hallelujah, I'm gonna say that again. So if you belong to Christ, you are redeemed, blessed with Abraham's blessings, filled with the Spirit, and an heir of God's promises. So in summary, the three-fold redemptive work of Christ in Galatians three gives us deliverance from the curse of the law, redemption of Abraham's blessings, justification by faith, and the gift of the Holy Spirit through faith. And all believers, all believers, Jew or Gentile, hallelujah, who are in Christ are heirs to all of this. Amen? It's, in Charles Cap's book, he reads, but I wanna go back to this. In Second Corinthians eight and nine, it says, "For poverty, he has given me wealth." Verse nine in the Amplified Version of Second Corinthians eight, it says, "For you are becoming progressively acquainted with and recognizing more strongly and clearly the grace of our Lord Jesus Christ, his kindness, his gracious generosity, his undeserved favor and spiritual blessing; and that though he was so very rich, yet for your sakes, for our sakes, he became so very poor, in order that by his poverty you might become enriched or abundantly supplied." Amen. Hallelujah. For sickness, he has given us health. Third John and two in the King James says, "Beloved, I wish above all things..." Not a beloved, are you a beloved? Amen, we're a beloved. "Beloved, I wish above all things that thou mayst prosper and be in health, even as thy soul prospers." Hallelujah. And then spiritual death, he's giving us eternal life in Second Corinthians five and twenty-one. In the Amplified, it says, "For our sake, he made Christ virtually to be sin, who knew no sin, so that in and through him we might become endued with, viewed as being in, and examples of the righteousness of God, what we ought to be, approved and acceptable and in right relationship with him by his goodness." And one more, I wanna go to John ten ten. In the Amplified, it says, "The thief comes only in order to steal and kill and destroy; but I came that they might have and enjoy life, and have it in abundance to the full till it overflows." Hallelujah, till it overflows. I have a confession that I do on a daily basis. And part of this confession is, and I'll share this confession with you. It says, "Christ has redeemed me from the curse of the law." Christ has, and it's all scriptural. "Christ has redeemed me from poverty. Christ has redeemed me from sickness. Christ has redeemed me from spiritual death. For poverty, he has given me wealth. For sickness, he has given me health. For death, he has given me eternal life." Hallelujah. And all of these, and I'll tell you the scriptures that they come from. Galatians three thirteen, Deuteronomy twenty-eight, Second Corinthians eight and nine, Isaiah fifty-three, five and six, John ten ten, and John five and twenty-four. Hallelujah. When I think about that, it says, "For poverty, he's given me wealth." He became the sacrifice so that we could have the poverty, the wealth. But it says, "But for poverty, he has given us wealth. For sickness, he has given us health. For death, he has given us eternal life, and, and be, being able to be in right standing with him and right relationship with him." Amen? Hallelujah. So moving on, it says, "The Greek word for salvation is solteria, which implies the idea of deliverance, safety, preservation, healing, and prosperity." In other words, nothing broken, nothing lacking, nothing missing, completely whole. Amen? Hallelujah. So that's another one of those benefit packages that we talked about last week. Salvation says, hallelujah, that it's deliverance, safety, preservation, healing, and prosperity. Amen. Nothing broken, nothing missing, nothing lacking, completely whole. Amen? Now, the Greek word for redeem is exaggeradoso, which means to compensate, regain possession of, ransom, or to buy off, payment, and to recover from the power of another. It sorta gives you the idea of a slave market. Jesus setting us free from the slave market of sin. Hallelujah. We have been made free from sin and its ravages once and for all through the blood of Jesus Christ. He paid that price for us on Calvary's tree. Hallelujah. And we have been made free from sin and its ravages because of the blood of Jesus. The blood still works. The blood of Jesus, hallelujah. But many believers don't realize that they have been set free by Jesus. We are free. When we accept him as our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, we are free. Jesus worked on the cross, totally purchased our redemption and our freedom. Can you say amen about that? Hallelujah. Amen. So the last section is God's medicine. God's Word is medicine. In Proverbs four twenty through twenty-two. Turn with me, go there with me. Proverbs four twenty through twenty-two. And I'm gonna read that in the King James Version. Say amen if you have it. It says, "My son, daughter, attend to my words; incline thine ear unto my sayings; let them not depart from thine eyes; keep them in the midst of thine heart; for they are life unto those that find them, and health to all their flesh." Amen. In the Amplified Version, it reads, "My son or daughter, attend to my words; consent and submit to my sayings; let them not depart from your sight; keep them in the center of your heart; for they are life to those who find them, healing and health to all their flesh." First of all, notice that God's Word is life. It is also health or medicine to all your flesh. God's Word will heal your body. Attend means to give time to, thought, meditation, and action. "For they are life to those who find them, and healing and health to all their flesh." That was verse twenty-two in the Amplified. But attend, let's just take a moment there to attend. It says, "Give time to." That means you gotta take time and get into the Word of God. You have to know what the Word of God says. Amen? Meditate on it. Meditate don't mean just you pick up your Word of God one day, and you don't pick it up again for another couple of days, or you don't think about it. But meditate. And there's an action with that. Meditate, that's a verb, meditate on it. Do something about it. That means you gotta read, you know what I'm saying? The Word of God, hallelujah. The Word of God, hallelujah. Because when you find it, it says, "It is health to all our flesh." It's health and it's healing to us if you find it. But you got to read the Word, you got to study it out to find it. Amen. Hallelujah. God's Word is the powerfulest medicine available to and can heal your body without side effects. Without side effects, hallelujah. Now you know that in today's world, I'm a nurse, of course, and so I'm used to every medicine that, you know, we give out or that we talk about. What does it have down at the bottom? What does it tell you about? Side effects. Sometimes you wonder, is it worth taking it if I'm going to have all of these side effects? Hallelujah. But with God's Word, there is no side effects. You can take as much of His medicine as you want to, and you won't have any side effects at all. Amen. Now let's go over to Joshua 1:8 in the King James Version. Joshua 1:8, King James. It says, verse 8, "This book of the law shall not depart out of thy mouth; but thou shalt meditate..." There it is. "Thou shalt meditate..." How often? Therein, day and night, "that thou mayst observe to do according to all that is written therein." So he's telling us that we got to meditate, we got to take that word in day and night. Think about it, attend to it. Amen. And then it says, "For then thou shalt make thy way prosperous." It doesn't say, "Then your way is prosperous." It says, "For then, when you do this, when you meditate day and nights, that you may observe to do according to all that is written therein; for then thou shalt make thy way prosperous, and then thou shalt have good success." Amen. So we got to meditate day and night. Meditate means to mutter or to say repeatedly. It was an old story that my grandfather used to always talk about back on the farm, back in the day, when he would be talking about the cows. He said, "Have you ever noticed how they just constantly chewing? You know, they're just chewing constantly, they're chewing." And I would say, "Well, you know, Granddaddy, what they got to do with anything?" He said, "But it's telling you something. They're chewing, and they chew on that until it is broken down, then they can swallow it and digest it." Hallelujah. But that's for us today, we have to meditate on the Word of God day and night, chew it, say it over and over again, repeat it over and over again, and say it out loud. So what comes by hearing? Faith. Say it out loud, just keep saying it, meditate on it day and night, and mutter it repeatedly. Amen. Psalms 107:20, let's go there, King James Version, Psalm 107:20. It says, "He sent His word and healed them and delivered them from their destructions." Psalms 107:20 tells us that God sent His word and healed them. Notice that it didn't say that God sent His word to heal, but He sent His word and healed. God considers it done. Amen. God considers it done. One more scripture, Hebrews 4:12 in the King James Version. Hebrews 4:12. It says, "For the Word of God is quick and powerful and sharper than any two-edged sword, piercing even to the dividing asunder of soul and spirit and of the joints and marrow, and is a deserner of the thoughts and intents of the heart." God's Word is quick and powerful. When you need a word quick, God's Word is quick and it's powerful. I heard something that Bishop said one Sunday. He said, "It cuts going in and it cuts coming out." But it's powerful, that two-edged sword is powerful. You cannot overdose on God's medicine. There is no limit to what amount of God's medicine you can take. There's no limit. In the natural, when you take that medicine, there's a limit that you can take. It tells you, take once a day, twice a day, three times a day, in the morning or at bedtime. Okay? But there is no limit to what amount of God's word that you can take. Amen. You can't overdose on it. Now you can overdose on that in the natural, but on God's word, you cannot overdose. The Bible is like medicine. It goes to work only when you apply it. Just as you would take medicine into your physical body to aid healing by physical means, so you must receive God's word concerning healing in your spirit for supernatural healing. Amen. I'm going to read that again. "Just as you would take medicine into your physical body to aid healing by physical means, so you must receive God's word concerning healing into your spirit for supernatural healing." Just like medicine in the natural, it will not do any good if you don't take it. Amen. It won't do any good if you don't take it. Your medicine on the nightstand, God's spiel, would not do any good if you don't take it either. So that means if that Word of God is sitting on the nightstand and you don't take it, it's not going to do you any good. But you, just like that medicine in the natural, you got to pick it up and you got to take it. Get it off the nightstand, get it off the coffee table. Let it become real, let it become life and health and healing to all of your flesh. Because the Word of God says, if you do that, if you attend to it, if you study it out, it will happen. Hallelujah. Amen. So in closing, I want to ask, are you taking your daily dosage of gospel pills? Amen. Again, God's Word is alive, and it brings health and healing to all your flesh. But you got to know it, you got to digest it, meditate on it day and night. So I encourage you, I hope you were blessed, get it off the nightstand and get it in your mouth. Get it in your mouth, get it in your heart, what the Word of God is saying concerning your healing, because it is your will that you are healed. God says, "It's His will that you are healed and not be in sickness." Amen. Praise the Lord.
Let's stand to our feet for a minute. Amen, praise God. I know you've been sitting there. Minister Margaret finished up a little early. I had to jump up. So let's just stretch a little bit. Amen. Amen, praise God, hallelujah. Let's get ready for the second half. I know that she came out of the gate. Amen, was she running? So I got to get you ready to run some more. Hallelujah, glory to God. You may be seated. Well, this opportunity to prosper. Amen, praise God. How many of you like to sow into that word you receive? Hallelujah, glory to God. Amen. If you need an offering envelope, should be one on your chair there. If you don't have one, just raise your hand and our ushers or greeters will get you one. Praise God, just a scripture for us to stand on as it relates to our giving. Amen, praise God. I'm going to go from New Testament and then over to the New Testament, two scriptures. Exodus, chapter 25, and verse 2. God spoke to Moses and told him to tell the children of Israel, and this is what it says, "Tell the Israelites to bring me an offering." Come on now, you can't get no more clarity than that, right? He said, "You are to receive my offerings from every man whose heart prompts them to give." Amen, praise God. So we give from our heart as the Holy Spirit prompts us, not begrudgingly or out of necessity. God loves a cheerful prompt to do with giver, doesn't He? And then over in 2 Corinthians in the New Testament, in verse, chapter 9, 2 Corinthians, chapter 9, and verse 7, the Apostle Paul writes to the church there, and he instructs them as it relates to their giving. It says, "Each one must give as he has desired it in his heart, not reluctantly." Amen, a cheerful giver. God loves a cheerful giver. And when I look at that scripture, well, if God loves a cheerful giver, what does He feel about somebody that don't give cheerfully? Just a thought. Amen. So we want to make sure that we are in line with what God has asked us to do. And you know, Bishop has been ministering along the lines of generosity. Amen, praise God. And the Holy Spirit, He moves in line with the Word of God. And so He is the one that prompts us to give. We wouldn't give had it not been for the Lord. Amen. So it looks like you have done what you're going to do. We're going to pray over our offering, our tithes. Amen. And we'll get right into our class. Lift your offerings up to the Lord. Father, in the name of Jesus, we come before you this evening, first of all, acknowledging that you are good. You are giving a seed to the sower, and we are sowers. Father, we thank you that as we sow our seed, you would cause it to come back to us, good measured, pressed down, shaken together, and running over shall men give unto our bosom. Now we release it, Father, with a cheerful prompt to do with heart, in obedience to what you have asked us to do. May it be used to bring souls into the kingdom and to bring glory to your name. Thank you, Father, for it, in Jesus' name. Now we have an expectation that only comes from you, that it will come back to us, in Jesus' name, all in agreement. Say amen. Amen, you may receive the offering. Hallelujah. Glory to God. How many of you enjoying laymans? Amen, praise God, hallelujah. A great refresher for some of us. Amen, it's revelation for some of us. Amen. But what I like is we are all in the same class, and we all are learning. Amen. Praise God. And when we learn, to whom much is given, much is required. So we want to make sure we make what we, take what we are learning and make it applicable to our lives. That's where you're going to see the blessing coming in. Amen. We're not just here to build ourselves up intellectually, we are to be built up spiritually. We're going to increase. Amen, praise God. So let's pray. Father, in Jesus' name, thank you for this class. We pray in the name of Jesus and ask you for, Holy Spirit, to give us help. Help us to learn, open up the eyes of our understanding as it relates to righteousness, helping us to know who we are and whose we are and what have been secured for us. And we give you all the praise and glory for it, in Jesus' name. Amen. Amen. Just going to recap a few minutes to bring us up to par. In our last class, we talked about where we have missed it as it relates to righteousness. And we talked about man as he is. We said that man had no standing with God because of sin consciousness. He could not even approach God. And so because of that, man developed a sin consciousness, an inferiority complex. And he lost faith in himself, he lost faith in God, and he lost faith in man. And that's what sin consciousness do. It robs you of who you are in Christ Jesus. Amen. And we have talked, we talked about how man is developed in sin consciousness because of the failure of the church teaching man about his righteousness. The churches have been, in times past, have been very skilled in teaching man where he missed it at, but failed in teaching man what Jesus did for him when he died on the cross. And so that's why we are here, and that's why this class is so very important. And we're going to be talking about also, as it relates to sin consciousness, what caused man to have sin consciousness? We talked about that last week. It was because of what Adam did in the Garden of Eden. God gave Adam a directive or a commandment, and He told him that you can touch all the trees in the garden, but the one that's in the center of the garden of good and evil do not touch. And because of Adam's disobedience, amen, praise God, as a result, Adam lost his connection with God. And so everybody born after Adam was born into sin. So Adam's disobedience caused us to live in disobedience. And tonight, we're going to pick up and talk about what Jesus did and got us restored back to God. Somebody say, "That's good news." So how we are in the second class, and that second class is our righteousness restored. Amen. So turn with me to 2 Corinthians, chapter 5. We're going to be reading verse 21 from the King James Version. "Because our standing with God is on the grounds of our faith in Christ Jesus." I'll say that again. Our standing with God today is based upon our faith in Christ Jesus, because God Himself laid all of our sin upon Christ. Amen. Everything that we have done, going to do, amen, it's all was on Christ. Amen. And then 2 Corinthians, chapter 5, and verse 21, and I'm reading it from the King James Version. "For He," amen, that He is God, "hath made Him to be sin for us." That's very clear. God made Jesus to be sin for us, who knew no sin. Jesus was innocent. He didn't know sin. He wasn't sinful, that we might be made the righteousness of God in Him, Christ. In other words, there was a great exchange. When Jesus died, He took on the sin of the world. In other words, what He did, He changed coats. He took off His clean, pure coat of righteousness and gave it to us and took our coat of unrighteousness and put it on. And as a result of that, He had to pay the price that you and I should be paying. And so Jesus was more than just a sin offering. He was actually made sin for us. That means that every evil and vile work of the devil was put upon Jesus Christ Himself. Amen. Say, "Thank you, Jesus." And because of that, Jesus took on unrighteousness, that we might take on righteousness. He took on the sin consciousness, the sin of man, which separate us from God, and gave us His coat of righteousness so that we can be in the presence of God. Amen. So that's good news for us. And what I like to say, it was a legal transaction that He did. In a legal context, we were unjust. Amen. But He was just. When you talk about legalities, you think about the court, you think about attorneys, you think about the law, amen, that was there. And we were unjust before God. So God had to do something. That means that we couldn't approach God, we were morally decayed, amen. We were as if we was dead, and God had no approval for us. He did not approve of us at all. But He loved us so very much that He did something about it. Amen. He sent His Son, Jesus, and Jesus became our substitute. You know what a substitute is, right? Jesus took our place. He took our place, and He was made sin for us. Amen. Praise God. When Jesus did that on the cross, when God looked at Jesus, He couldn't even look at Him. That's why He turned His back. That's why he turned his back, and Jesus cried out, "Why hast thou forsaken me?" Cause he couldn't look at him because of the depth of sin from generation to generation. When I think about that, because the Bible talks about sin, transgressions, and iniquities. Iniquity is the depth of sin. The iniquity goes back from the very beginning, amen, when we were under the curse. And the Bible talks about how the sins of the father are upon the children down to the third and the fourth generation. But what Jesus did, the blood of Jesus went back all the way and wiped it clean. So we now don't have to say now our children have to suffer for what we did because of the blood of Jesus, because of the righteousness of God. The scripture says that, that the seed of the righteous is blessed, and the generation of the upright is delivered. When did they get delivered? When Jesus died on the cross. So we are so grateful and thankful for that. In other words, Jesus went to prison for us. We should have been locked up. Come on now. We should have been, uh, declared, uh, 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 criminal. And, and we were. However, but because of what Jesus did on the cross, taking on our sin, making us righteous, we were acquitted. Now, what the word acquit told means is that, I wrote it down, come on now, cause you know I looked that up. When he went to prison, to which sinners were sentenced and suffered, what, guess what he did? That word acquit, that acquit, acquittal means that we were set free. Dropped the charges. The charges was dropped. You no longer guilty. Amen. In other words, when you went to the court of heaven, because of what Jesus did, we were guilty. But Jesus took on that guilt, everything that we did, and he sat in front of the court, in the court of heaven before God. And his blood was the answer for our sin. And when God sees the blood, he says this, "Dropped the charges." They dropped. Amen. It's that good news. I love it. Hallelujah. Let's go to Ephesians, chapter four and verse eight. Ephesians, chapter four and verse eight. Because when Jesus did that, when he died on the cross in Ephesians four and eight, the scripture says that he led captivity captive. And I can read that scripture. It says, "Wherefore he saith, when he ascended up on high," come on now, when they raised, when he was raised from the dead, and he went up, right? "He led captivity captive and gave gifts to men." We are focusing in on part A of that scripture. "He led captivity captive." And what that means is that, uh, in ancient days, uh, and in Jesus' time, when a king would go in and capture, uh, another nation, what they would do? They would cut the head off that king, and he'd take his head, and they marched down the street in a parade to let the enemy know, "I got the head." Well, what Jesus did, Jesus, when he died on the cross, and he went and took his own blood and sprinkled it on the mercy seed, and then the moment he did that, we became righteous, and what he did, he went down to hell. And he took the devil, and he, amen, marched down the corridors of hell and let them know, "I am a conqueror. I have the victory. I have the victory over sin, over death, over sickness, over disease, over poverty, over lack, and you have found nothing in me because I got the victory." And when we are declared righteous, and now that we have Jesus Christ, we are the righteousness of God. And when the devil stepped to us, we ought to say, "I am the righteousness of God. I'm more than a conqueror." Come on now, somebody. "I always triumph in God, so you need to leave me alone." In other words, the supreme court of heaven was satisfied, satisfied with what Jesus did, uh, by giving us righteousness for unrighteous. Because the court of heaven desired payment, and the payment for our unrighteousness, or you can say our sin, was death. Uh, Romans 6:23. "For the wages of sin is..." "But the gift of God is eternal life." Uh, the courts had to be satisfied, and so somebody had to die, and Jesus did that for us. And when he did it, he led captivity captive. Meaning, uh, when you, when they did that, it had to be announced. You had to say something. He had had to be announced, and it had to be clear, it had to be firm, and it had to be public. Did he die publicly? Yes, he did that. And he rose, did he not? Amen, praise. How many you thank Jesus for what he did? Amen, praise God. Let's look at Romans, chapter four. Romans, chapter four and verse 25. "Because in his death," uh, amen, burial and resurrection, I mentioned earlier that we were acquitted, amen, that the offenses that were against us, amen, uh, now had been justified. Uh, and that scripture says in Romans 4:25, "Who was delivered for our offenses and was raised again for our justification." In other words, Jesus himself was put to death. He was betrayed. You know that, you know the story. We, if you read it in your Bible, but if you come to church on Easter, you know we tell that story, right? Now I know you read your Bible before you get to Easter, but, amen. But Jesus was betrayed, and he was put to death on our behalf for everything that you and I have done, and was raised to secure our justification. Now that word justification is another word for acquittal. We were acquitted of our misdeeds on the account of what Jesus did for us. And I think, I just believe that, I know for me personally, uh, growing up, and even as an adult, not understanding what righteousness was. In fact, it was in my circle, I'll say that, I can't speak for everybody, when somebody say, uh, "I'm righteous," they would say to me, "No, none are righteous." They would say that. But then when I studied the word of God, I realized that we all, if we accept Jesus Christ as our Lord and Savior, we were made righteous by the blood of Jesus. Amen, praise God. We are no longer condemned. We are no longer disapproved of God. Now we have been approved. Now we can come boldly to the throne of grace to obtain mercy and find the help that we need. We'll no longer have to hang out into the courtyard of the temple. We can now go walk right up in, in there, because when Jesus died, and he said it was finished, the court of justice had been, uh, satisfied because of what Jesus did on that cross. And the curtain in the temple was split in two. Now we don't have to have bulls and goats that stand for the blood because Jesus took his own blood, and he sprinkled it on the mercy seed, giving us access into this grace by faith. So our faith in Christ Jesus solidifies us that we can now go in and talk to God face to face. How many you thank God for the righteousness of God? Praise God. Let's look at 1 Timothy, chapter three and verse 16. "Because we were justified, when Jesus did that, he was justified in the spirit." Amen. Now this scripture right here in 1 Timothy 3:16, it bears studying out in that, uh, when we read it, we'll see, and I'll, I'll, uh, do it from the Amplified Version. I believe this is the Amplified Version right here. It's, uh, 1 Timothy 3:16. It says here, 1 Timothy 3:16. "And without controversy great is the mystery of godliness." God was manifest in the flesh. Now what that means is that God came to earth in the flesh through Jesus Christ. So, uh, justified in the spirit, meaning that, uh, the Holy Spirit, he himself justified Jesus Christ because Jesus was unrighteous, right? He took on our unrighteousness. He took on our sin, our trespasses, our iniquity. But when he was raised from the dead, that same spirit, the Holy Ghost, raised him from the dead because the court of heaven had been satisfied. Amen, praise God. He was vindicated because of his blood. And it's the Holy Spirit, when he was raised from the dead, the Holy Spirit proved that he was righteous because he got up out of the grave. 1 Peter, chapter three and verse 18. 1 Peter 3:18. This, this scripture here kind of undergirds 1 Timothy, chapter three and verse 16 in that, uh, the Holy Spirit, uh, is the one who quickened the mortal body of Jesus Christ. In 1 Peter 3:18, Jesus was made alive in the spirit. And it says here, "For Christ also hath once suffered for our sins." How many of you have ever heard, "He died one time, and he ain't go..." Once. You don't have to keep, man, keep, you know, you gotta keep going back, keep going. No, he did it once and for all. And it says here, "That he might bring us to God." He died, he went there. What was the reason for him dying? That he might bring us to God. We were separated from God. Being put to death in the flesh because that was our sentence. We had a death sentence. And he took on our part, and he was put to death on our behalf, right? And listen what this says. "But," somebody say, "but." "Quickened," how? "By the Spirit." Amen. He was quickened by the Spirit, not in the flesh. Now, that word quicken, I want to just, um, uh, give some more clarity to the word quicken. Now we know that the word quicken means to make alive, make alive. So Jesus, he not only died physically, uh, uh, when he died for us, but he died spiritually. But the Holy Spirit, God's Holy Spirit, quickened him and made him alive. So when you and I, we were dead spiritually because of what? Sin. Amen. We, uh, hell, we were to gain. I mean, but not heaven. We were going to hell because we were spiritually dead. But because of Jesus, what he did, then we becoming the righteousness of God. Now we have a hell to shun and a heaven to gain because he brought us nigh unto God. Amen. Praise God. So when we believe in Jesus as our Savior, God is able to declare us righteous on the grounds of what Jesus did. Colossians 1:18. Colossians 1:18. He is now, Jesus was the firstborn, come on now. He was the firstborn. He was, when he died and rose again, established the church. He was the firstborn of the church. In Colossians 1:18, it says, "And he is the head of the body." Praise God. What is the body? The church. Who is the beginning, the firstborn of the dead. Come on now. "And in all things he might have preeminence," meaning he ought to have first place because he's what? The head. Did you and I go and take on the sins of the world? No. Amen. We probably couldn't understand, we probably couldn't stood the road on Golgotha. They hit us one time, and we is over. Y'all done. Come on now. But not thanks beyond to God. He kept walking. Even when he stumbled and fell with the cross, which is a symbol of death, he failed, but God provided him help. Somebody got up and took up that cross. Come on now, somebody. He had to make it to Golgotha. He had to die because death was the payment, and he wasn't gonna reneg on it. Come on now. Cause he loved us with an everlasting love. His love kept him on the cross. Come on now, somebody. Even the devil put him between two thieves. One tried to convince him that who he was, and the other one said, "This man hadn't done anything." And then he turns to Jesus and, "Remember me." Come on now. And what was Jesus' response? "This day." Come on, you gonna be with me in paradise. Whenever I hear "this day," I get, woo! Oh, man, that's another sermon. I'm about to go there, but hey. So, as surely as God made Jesus sin, guess what? God made us righteous. Just that moment, praise God. You, you probably don't see it as, it's supernatural. It's supernatural. When you said, "I now take Jesus as my Lord and Savior," Romans 10:8 through 10. "What saith it? The word is nigh thee, even in thy mouth and in thy heart." "That is the word of faith which we preach, that if thou shalt confess," that mean own up to who you are. Yeah, I'm a sinner. "If thou shalt confess the Lord Jesus and believe in your heart that God raised him from the dead, you shall be saved." When you said that, boom, you were snatched out of the kingdom of darkness and translated over into the kingdom of his dear son. You were dancing with the devil, but you changed partners. Come on now, somebody. I love it. I get excited. So under the law, we no longer have to have the blood of the, of bulls and goats that they offered in, in the Old Testament. That's what they did, and that was atonement. Uh, every year, once a year, they would go, uh, to, uh, the tent of tabernacles then. And they would have the courtyard where they had everything set up, and what they would take a bull or goat or lamb without spot of blemish. Who was that lamb represented? Jesus. The lamb without, couldn't, the lamb couldn't be sick. He couldn't be crippled. You know they did a thorough inspection. Cause if they didn't, and the priest that take it in there, he wasn't coming out. So I'm gonna make sure that lamb looking, she got no spots on it. That's what he did. We couldn't go in there. Only the high priest could. And those, uh, uh, sacrifices, the blood of bulls and goats and lamb, amen, praise God. Uh, the, the, the goat was tied, something was tied around his neck, and he was sent into the wilderness as an example of taking our sin away. And then the lamb, uh, the blood was taken from the lamb and taken behind the veil, uh, the holies of holies, and offered as an atonement. Atonement means it was covered for one year. Come on now, but for one year, you gotta come back the next year. Amen. So you stumbled, you could, you stumbled, but Jesus, the perfect sacrifice that was offered on Calvary, Golgotha, blood pure, uh, he took his own blood. He is, Jesus is not only our Savior, but he is the high priest of our confession. He took his own blood, and he put it on that mercy seat. And as a result of that, we now have access to God. Is that good news? So, uh, we are no longer have to atone, and when you hear that word atonement, your ears should go up. So while we have to atone for our sins, Jesus did that already, already. He already have done that. So we are now under a new covenant, and that blood, the blood of Jesus, amen, uh, covered, I mean, I mean, remitted everything. Under the law, it covered it. But under the new covenant, it cleansed us. We are clean. Amen, praise God. And I, I'm gonna throw something in here. Uh, we are cleansed by the word of God, right? The washing of the water by the word. But Jesus himself was the word personified. In John, uh, chapter one, "In the beginning..." "And the word..." It was with God. The word was God, and the word was with God. And if you drop down to verse 14. "And the word became flesh and dwelt among us." So when you take the word of God and read it, that's Jesus. You sitting right there with Jesus. Because he is the word. And so now we can stand in the presence of God without any sense of inferiority, uh, without a complex where you scared to come before God. God says, "I made a way for you to do that." God says, "I made a way for you to do that." So come on in, come on in and, and talk with me. Amen. Praise God. Hallelujah. Woo, I gotta run. Amen. Uh, God himself is our righteousness. We don't be, God himself is our righteousness. He, God, is righteous. I mean, you know, God is righteous. And he declared us righteous when Jesus died on the cross. Because Jesus was made sin for us. Let's look at First Corinthians, chapter one and verse thirty. Uh, because it was God who made us a part of Jesus Christ. It was God's love for us. In First Corinthians, chapter one and verse thirty. "God, our righteousness." And it says here, "But of him of the, are ye in Christ Jesus, who of God," notice that, "who of God is made unto us, what? Wisdom and righteousness and sanctification and redemption." So what that is saying to us is this. It's saying to us in this scripture is that God used Jesus to make us righteous. And as a result, you and I have the same spiritual DNA as Christ does. And as a result of that DNA, God himself is the reason why we can carry his spiritual DNA. Because God, John three sixteen, because God so loved the world that he gave his only begotten son. That's the reason why we are righteous. And this scripture tells us that we have been made right with God because we were wrong with God, right? But we were made right with God because of what Jesus did on the cross. And as a result, now we have been sanctified, set apart, amen. Pulled out of darkness and now we in the light, amen. And we have been redeemed. And the scripture said, "Let the redeemed of the Lord," what? You ought to be saying something. I've been redeemed. Come on, no, I'm not gonna sing. Amen. But it was because of God's great love that he did that for us. Amen. Praise God. Romans three twenty-six. Romans three twenty-six. Praise the Lord. Hallelujah. Romans three twenty-six says that God declared that he himself has become our righteousness. And this what it says. It says, "To declare, uh, I say at this time his righteousness, that he might be just and the justifier of him which believeth in Jesus." Now the Amplifier says this. It was to demonstrate, come on now, his righteousness at the present time. So that he would be just and the one who justifies those who have faith in Jesus and rely confidently on him as Savior. So when you and I receive Jesus as our Lord and Savior, nobody else did that for us but God. He was the only one that could do it. Because he was the only one that was without sin. He, we didn't qualify. Even though today man still is trying to make themselves righteous by works. But it's not by works, it's by faith in Jesus. That's what makes us righteous. Amen. So we know he, Jesus was made righteous and he entered into the presence of the Father on our behalf. Hebrews nine and twelve tells us, and I've said it before, I'm not gonna go to that scripture, but Jesus presented his own blood. You can write that scripture down. Jesus presented his own blood, uh, once and for all, uh, on the, in the holies of holies. Now also, let's talk about the legality of righteousness. Righteousness is legally ours because of, of the Old Testament under the law. Uh, Jesus, the New Testament hadn't been started yet because Jesus brought in a new covenant, a better covenant. So they were under the law and they followed the law. The Jews, the people then, followed the law. The law was good. Nothing wrong with the law, but you remember that Jesus said that I didn't come to destroy, destroy the law, but I came to fulfill the law. Everything that the law spoke of was speaking of what was to come. Jesus. Amen. It pointed to Christ. So righteousness is legally our because Jesus met the legalities for us to become the righteousness of God. Jesus died, amen. He died physically and he also died spiritually. Let's look at Isaiah fifty-three and nine. Isaiah fifty-three and nine. Cause his death were plural. Uh, he died two times and I just mentioned that. Uh, he died physically and he died spiritually. But look what it says in, in verse nine of Isaiah fifty-three. It says, "And he made his grave with the wicked and with the rich in his death, because he had done no violence, neither was any deceit in his mouth. He wasn't dishonest or violent, but he was buried in a tomb among cruel and rich people." So he died physically and he died spiritually. So spiritually, uh, the, the church, or you can say the, the teaching, uh, that the church, that's how the church has failed in teaching people about heaven. Uh, it's gonna be alright when we get to heaven. But right here on the earth, you just gonna have to suffer through. You're just gonna have to stay broke. You're gonna have to stay sick. You're gonna, you know, you're gonna, you can't, you ain't gonna be able to do right. You know, you just a sinner, saved by grace. You go, see, the devil done got you confused. You either sinner or you saved. One or the other. Amen. It'll be all over after a while, when I get down to the chilly streams of Jordan and I cross over in the sweet by and by, going up yonder, all of that, that ain't God. Why would I wanna live in hell here on earth? When everything Jesus did opened the door for me not to be sick no more. Minister Margaret just got to teaching there. She brought that home about what Jesus did. We were redeemed. He paid the price. We don't have to be sick no more. Meaning that it does not mean that the enemy is not gonna challenge you. But you gotta know who you are in Christ Jesus. I am the righteousness of God. I've been redeemed from the curse of the law. I've been redeemed. He paid a price for me. The price was hefty. I'm valuable. He paid the best that he had. I wasn't cheap. So I ain't gonna be like them cheap. Come on now. Most believers, they fold like a cheap suit when the devil come up. And you know how them suits, they shiny. Oh, Lord. I'm thinking about my mama now. She gonna say, "Oh, that." And he say, "Virginia," that's my mama's name, "Virginia, so and so showed it look good." She would say, "He gonna fold, but that thing is shiny and it's thin." That's what I learned about what a cheap suit was. We weren't, we, we not cheap. We, we didn't, God paid a good price for us. Amen. And we are thankful to the, for the, to the Lord for that. Amen. Praise God. So righteousness legally is ours. And so as a result of that, right now, he, we were delivered, we were set free. And now we stand before the Father as if sin never existed before. And so now we have our sins removed. They're not, hey, the enemy will come to bring them up before us. Now he gonna keep bringing it back. You know what you did. But we have to learn that righteousness, when you confess, come on now. It does, righteousness does not give us the right to keep on sinning because we were made righteous. "Oh, I was made righteous. I can just go do anything I wanna do." That's the devil. No, we, when he comes to accuse the brethren of what they have done, of what I have done, I immediately, because I know now that I am the righteousness of God in Christ. When God sees me, when I confess, First John one nine, amen. He doesn't see my sin, he sees the blood. Come on now. As soon as that sin happened and I own up to it. Come on now, you gotta own up to it. What does First John one nine say? It says, "If we," if we, it's conditional. "If we confess our sin, he, who, God is faithful and just to forgive us of our sin and to cleanse us from all unrighteous." Now I could have sinned a minute ago, but when I, Holy Spirit, cause he is at work in us. He's gonna bring, he didn't come to condemn, he came to convict. Once I been convicted of my sin, you know you weren't, you know you wasn't right. You know, cause he gonna talk to you the way you talk. Now you know, you, you know better than that. I said, "Oh, Father, I'm so sorry. Please forgive me." The moment I do that, guess what? God is faithful and just to forgive me. He don't see the sin, he see the blood. The blood. Come on now, somebody say the blood. So we thank God for forgiveness. Amen. Now men, because of what Jesus have done, can stand in the presence of God. And as a result, righteousness have been restored to us. It's a legal recovery. What Adam lost in the garden have been recovered by Jesus. Adam was the first man, Jesus, the first, Adam, the first Adam. But Jesus is the second Adam. And the second Adam came to restore man back to his rightful place that the first Adam lost. And I thank God for that because he did not leave us out there all by ourselves. And when I think about how God tried to get Jesus on the scene, it took forty-two generations to bring Jesus on the scene because the devil kept hindering. But he got here, didn't he? And we are grateful for that. So the revelation about our righteousness can be found in the Bible. And I love what the Apostle Paul talks about that in First Corinthians. Um, yeah, First Corinthians one nine, let's go there. Because righteousness is by grace. Uh, and so we thank God for grace because the acronym for grace is we receive God's riches at Christ's expense. So we, we, we are who we are today because of Jesus. First Corinthians one nine says, "God is faithful," come on now, "by whom you were called." Say, "That's me." "That's you. That's me." "unto fellowship of his son, Jesus Christ, our Lord." He, he's faithful. "We were called into fellowship by our Father." And sin consciousness, it no longer holds us in bondage. We've been set free. We are free. And whom the Son sets free is what? Free indeed. Amen. So when you talk about sin consciousness, it is the parent of all religions. But we are not religious. We are Christians who named the name of Jesus. And as back in the Old Testament, in Genesis one, when Adam messed up, he hid from God. We are no longer hiding from God now. We can walk right up to our Father and fellowship with him through worship, through prayer, through praise. Just sit down and talk to him, whereas before we were separated. Now we have been drawn nigh unto him. So we can say, what is the meaning of righteousness restored? Righteousness restored is the ability to stand in the presence of God without any sense of inferiority, or that means inadequacy, or, or a sin complex because of what Jesus did on the cross. And on the real basis of our faith in Christ, amen. We can now know that we have been restored unto our Father. And the book of Romans tells us that, our last scripture, Romans, chapter one and verse seventeen. Cause this scripture right here, you can read the whole book of Romans because it tells you about the righteousness of God. The book of Romans is a copy of how God secured our righteousness for us. And it was on the grounds of our faith in Christ Jesus. The Apostle Paul wrote to the church there at Rome and did that teaching to them in verse, Romans, chapter one and verse seventeen. "Righteousness of God is from faith to faith." It says, "For therein, uh, the righteousness of God revealed how, from faith to faith, as it is written, the just shall live by faith." We have been justified, come on now, by the blood of Jesus. And now we go from one level of faith to the other level of faith in the revelation of who we are. It's not that like you come into layman's and, you know, "Oh, I've been to layman's and I know I'm the righteousness of God in Christ Jesus and I don't need to read no more." No, you need to keep it before your eyes because the devil gonna come and try to pimp you, make you think you not the righteousness of God. You'll still, you'll be the poor way, "I won't go," I, no, I'm just, I can't. You don't even know how to walk right. You gotta be reminded. I said, the, the, when Jesus, and I'm gonna end with this, I got three minutes. When Jesus was teaching his disciples here on the earth and he's getting ready to go to the cross. They said to him, they said, "Jesus, how will we know? How will we, how will we remember everything that you have taught us?" Cause you know, he's telling them, "I'm going away, I won't be here long." And I said, "How are we gonna remember?" He said, "But when he, the Holy Spirit comes, he will bring to your remembrance all things that I have taught you." So Holy Spirit, he is the one, you, we need him to teach us. We can, we just can't fold the book up and say, "Oh, I read that, I got that." When you do that, you, right now, put yourself in a vulnerable situation. How often we supposed to look at the word, Joshua one eight? Meditate on the word, how often? Day and night, night and day, so that your way can be made prosperous and you can be successful walking in the righteousness of God. That's our class for tonight. Amen. Let's stand to our feet. Hallelujah. Glory to God. We thank God. Hallelujah. Take a neighbor by the hand and say, "Neighbor, I am so glad that I came." Neighbor know this. Your righteousness- -has been restored. You are now- -able- -to walk- -right up to the throne of God- -without sin- -or inferiority. Amen. Praise God. Y'all be blessed.